I would invite so many women.
When it comes to sexual reproductive health rights, women with disabilities suffer more. When a deaf girl is raped, how can she share her story? And when a blind girl or a blind woman is raped, how can she describe the person who raped her? And for someone like me seated in a wheelchair when I'm attacked, how can I run? These are very sensitive questions that we also need to ask ourselves. What about recommendations, solutions? And I have few recommendations and solutions to share with you. And number one on my list is we need to establish partnerships between government and private sectors on how to work with disabled people organizations, on how our policies that we have can be implemented. And my second point, which is very, very important, that so many women and girls with disabilities are experiencing at the grassroots. Many of them don't know their sexual reproductive rights. So we need to collaborate and raise awareness on how these rights can be explained to women and girls with disabilities.
So it's an honor to be here. I'm very grateful that you invited me to be at this town hall meeting. And just to say that the issue of about 10% of the world population are people living with disability. And most of these people are not aware of their sexual and reproductive health rights. It's worse off because the people who don't have disabilities also do not help them to understand what their rights are. And because of that, they are being discriminated. Recently, I got some information from an organization that I support in Lagos. And the news was that there was a lady who had who has some form of disability, who has a 16-year-old daughter, who is a child with special needs that was raped by by a gateman. And the man was in custody, was in police custody, but the family did not have any money to prosecute the man. And so that particular NGO was reaching out to kind of get get some funds so that the family could prosecute the man legally. So these are like issues we hear every day. These are issues we see. And I'm happy that in this kind of meeting, we can sit down and deliberate and develop strategies that I believe will be implemented to help people with disabilities to ensure that people with disabilities know their sexual and reproductive health rights. And also to advocate and increase the enlightenment in the Nigerian space and even further than the Nigerian space so that policies that we have to protect the rights of people with disabilities are implemented.
This focus gives a great attention to the promise made by the government to protect the rights of the population irrespective of their challenges. And also provide an opportunity to stimulate greater effort to domesticate the UN rights for persons with disability with emphasis among others. The freedom of access to basic facilities such as health, education, information, and transport to mention but a few. In Nigeria, like I said, it is very difficult to estimate the exact number of PWDs due to the inadequate demographic data. However, available evidence shows that the number of PWDs is increased in Nigeria due to the fact, due to the factors such as malnutrition, infection, diseases, increase in chronic health conditions, mental health problem, birth defects, and accidents, HIV and other communicable diseases and preventable diseases like leprosy and measles. The reproductive health rights include both being able to make decisions over your sexuality and reproduction as such, as well as accessing facilities and services related to this. But the law don't give us that right. This morning, I want to let you know that my department are focusing on humanitarian response. And we work on humanitarian ground. We do an early warning alert. We want to know the situation of people around. Like one, we are working in Medjugorje. A lot of people have fallen into the group of PWD because of the insurgency and the situations over there. On behalf of my director and the Ministry of Health, I want to say thank you and God bless you.
As far back as 2015, 2016, we started working with children with disabilities in some schools around the F City. And before that time, for me, honestly, I must confess, I didn't really see it. I didn't, for me, I was neutral. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't think that issues of sexual violence, you know, particularly happened with people with disabilities until we started that particular project that brought us quite a lot in contact with children with disabilities who had been abused. And one particular case stood out for me at that time. This blind girl who was in school was raped separately by a non-academic staff in her school. But because of the whole issue of stigma and her inability to identify in clear terms who it was that raped her, you know, she kept quiet until our school, our organization carried out an intervention in her school, built the capacity of girls in that school, established a girls' club in that school, which is part of what our organization does. And during that intervention, this girl was able to come out to speak out and were able to get justice for her. The perpetrator, you know, was arrested and all of that. And I started feeling some form of interest. But then I attended a, our organization, some of our staff attended a training actually carried out by a person with disabilities, where our eyes was just more or less like we were blind before and now we're able to see, you know, the specific challenges that people with disabilities face, especially, you know, in the area of sexual violence. And we did a list, well, not extensive research, but just going into the internet. And I just want to share us, share with us some of the information that we're able to get. There was one, we came across a global study from UNFPA, a UN body, which reveals that girls and young women with disabilities face up to 10 times more forms of gender-based violence against them than those without disabilities, 10 times. So once again, our organization, we are really excited to be here. And I wish the network of women with disabilities more exploits in the days and in the years to come.
Our ministry is the national machinery for every women advocacy, especially as it concerns gender promotion. We are very happy to be identified with you people. And I can tell you that the ministry has been using several global instruments to address the barrier of gender-based violence against women, especially men with disabilities. They've been doing a lot of sensitization and capacity loading to help women to realize their health and reproductive rights. It's really very, very important because you cannot defend what you don't know. Like when she was talking, she said something about it and it's very right. We really have, we really have to do a lot of sensitization concerning sexual health and reproductive rights of women and girls, in particular, people with disability. Let us understand that unless people understand what is their right, they cannot defend it. It is your right, and I can tell you, it is a fundamental human right, and you have to protect it. And you are also, human beings like every other person, don't feel anyhow, God has great helped us people. And in my ministry, we are defending every woman. We can't categorize you like this or that. They will give you what you deserve, and that is where equity comes in. We are not treating you equally with other people because we deserve special care. Yes, when we give you equal opportunity with people who are normal, we are not really giving you the opportunity. When we now address your case according to your own peculiarities, we will not bring you to what you want to be because you want to be treated as human beings and you want to be treated as people with respect. And so I call upon all of you today that you yourself should not discriminate yourself. Call yourself up, know that you are everything anybody can have, and know that the federal ministry of women affairs is always with you. Whatever thing you need to do with us, we are always open to you and we will always give you the support you need. I bless you, women, women with disability. We love you and we are always here to do things to make you happy, to promote your cause, and to bring you to know that God loves you too. Thank you, everybody.
And I think this event is highlighting a very important group, a group that is not focused a lot on in society. So I commend the organizers, I commend the network for organizing this event. Thank you so much. The European Union, we have different funding mechanisms in place. I don't know all the mechanisms, but to my pleasure, I learned that we are funding the Sexual Offenses Awareness and Response Initiative and their work with the fighting crimes committed against children. I think it's important for me to be here today. Okay, sorry, I'm being told I speak too fast. I'm often being told that, and this work I cannot keep up, understandable. For me today, it's mostly important to be here to learn. So I will cut it short because I think it's important for organizations like ours sponsoring projects in Nigeria to hear what you have to say and especially hear it from the people who are actually suffering suffering from many of the discriminations being perpetrated every day. So thank you for allowing us to be here, thank you for extending the invitation, and I wish you a good event, thank you.
My message is very simple. The media hasn't done much about persons with disabilities. So this is a challenge for every media to ensure that we push out, we give visibility to the issues that affect persons with disabilities. Women Radio was set up and birthed to, the vision is to give visibility and support and promote everything that is female-centric. So the development and the progress of every woman matters to us. And every woman refers to every female gender irrespective of your disability, your color, your belief, your faith. And I'd like to say a very big thank you to Lloyds. Lloyds has been a resource person on Women Radio, educating us on the heels netted out to persons with disability. She has helped with our ignorance, a lot of us are ignorant of the things that affect persons with disabilities. So we thank her very much. We're here today to show her that we will continue to support persons with disabilities. We will continue to push the agenda of persons with disabilities on Women Radio. Women Radio is also going to do everything we can, you know, with Ashon Beat and Global Affairs Canada to continue to push for the agenda that affects persons with disabilities. Like somebody has said here today, we're human beings irrespective of what matters or where we find ourselves. So continue to push, continue to make demands, continue to charge our leaders. You know, continue to make demands on them to make sure that they give you what they promise you, especially when they are campaigning because you voted for them. So we will continue to push, we will continue to give you visibility. And I just want to publicly declare that Women Radio would always support whatever persons with disabilities are doing. And we thank you very much.
Women and girls with disabilities face more frequently socio-economic inequalities than their non-disabled peers, which include higher rate of poverty, lower education level, increased rate of unemployment, and sexual violence. All these social disparities are in turn strong determinants of health inequities, including restricted access to health facilities and poor health outcomes. Part of the association between disability and adverse health outcomes may be mediated by the socio-economic disadvantages. Sexual and reproductive health is an essential part of our health systems and a pillar for sustainable development that deserve important focus in many resource limited countries as unsafe sex, abortions, HIV, and other sexual transmitted infections. Sexual and gender-based violence and other pregnancy-related adverse outcomes constitute major risk factors of mortality and morbidity in this setting. Yet, the need of people with disabilities in this area have been neglected for decades. Mrs. Adioden Essete, I'll start with you. As a nurse, what do you think government need to put in place to ensure that women and girls with disabilities have access to sexual reproductive health facilities?
As God friends, I think first step is to also sensitize the populace about the rights of people living with disabilities. Like you said earlier, they are not rude. They also have sexual feelings. You know, generally, everybody sees like a taboo. Most people see like a taboo. When somebody with, living with disability comes to your clinic and say, "Okay, please, can you tell me I'm about to have a condom?" After everything, they're still coming to ask about condoms. So the first is like a taboo, but they also have that feeling, they also need that. They also need that information. The lack of inclusivity in the education we provide on sexual reproductive health to include some of the challenges of people living with disabilities is one thing I found that is faulty in what we do. You know, we focus mainly on people that can read. Now, what about the blind girl? How will you pass a message out? But do you have brains that pass this message on sexual reproductive health tips to them? You know, the perceptions, changing the perceptions of healthcare workers about people living with disabilities is one major thing. I think the government has to take into consideration when they're doing that. And also in line with that, making our environmental structures sustainable, accessible to them. Most of our healthcare centers are not accessible to them. It's as if they shut down their clinic away from people living with disability. No ramp, you know, how will you access an healthcare center when you don't have the facility that we have? Do you go into those facilities? So it's a major, major challenge because now that we have a policy in place, it's to get the government that can't help it to those policy and make sure that our structure, our healthcare structures and facilities are put in proper, you know, proper way for our people living with disabilities to be able to access. Government should really find ways to help members of the populace to understand the needs of people living with disability. Enough of this stigma, enough of this stereotype. They are women, they have a sexual feeling and they have a right to their sexual feeling.
When we talk about, I will come to work, rape and women with disability. This one almost makes me feel like crying. If we sit in women with disability from the age of 15 and above, maybe to 45, bring 10, I will tell you, yes, more than eight or at least eight of them are already being raped. We are deemed vulnerable. But the point is that up to five of them will never speak out. They keep quiet because they don't have someone for them to confine in. And also the attitude of the society make them feel bad, as if they are bad people. To a point that they don't want to think they are more bad by speaking out because it would be easy for people to condemn them that they caused the rape. And because of this, because of this, many of them have been victims to sexual transmitted infections. As you see me sitting here, my husband can not and can never force me to have sex. Sometimes two weeks, we will not sleep together. Meaning we cannot have sex. If he feels like, and I do not feel like, he respects me because he knows that I know my rights. If he trusts me, that amounts to rape. But many of our women, our husband will always tell them, it's my right. You are my wife, you are my wife. You can't say this, I paid your debt on your head. The woman sometimes feel, okay, if my husband, it is not rape. If I say this, they will condemn me, they keep shop. No, it is rape. Some of our women, when they are young, they are exposed to rape. And if we expose a young person to rape, the person will become addicted. By the time the person is seven or eight years, their attitude change. Perspective of life and series of rape, they have been subjected to affect them. To the point that they become loose, they start to have loose personality, always open up to anybody. Some of them become infected with disease. And when they are infected, getting treatment becomes a challenge because our hospitals are not accessible due to a lot of death among our women. Therefore, the challenge, the solution should be how to make our hospitals accessible. One, provisions of interpreter. Training of hospital staff, like medical doctors, nurses, attendants on how to treat people with disabilities differently. Training of public health practitioners on how to deal with people with disabilities differently. Apart from our hospitals, our women should also know our rights, what we are entitled to. When you are violated, don't keep quiet, report. We have appropriate authorities like National Human Rights Commission, like NAPTAP, many others, even organizations like Network of Disabled Women. We are empowered organizations, registered with CAC. You don't need to keep quiet at all when something like this happens. Calm and confined in us, they will know how to take up your matter. It is a collective effort, not only you, not only us. We have to make a move by reporting together and fighting this battle and overcoming it. Finally, I see that most times when we talk about women or people with disabilities, we hear 5 percentage set aside for persons with disability. We have to push to revoke this percentage. How can 5 percentage? We're talking about violence against women with disabilities or sexual reproductive health rights. When somebody is raped, the person suffer mental issue, post-rap trauma. That means the number of people with disability that are victims, women with disabilities are victims, are high. It's not only 5%. Working with RAPA, this was the first thing I observed. I saw UN percentage, I saw 5 percentage. I discussed with somebody and I said, this can't be 5 percentage. We have many women who are suffering from mental issue due to rape. I pushed it with RAPA. I did not agree with 5%. Okay, they need 15 organizations and 5 percentage for persons with disability. Women with disabilities became like, that means two organizations. Two organizations out of 50. It is not proper. There are many of us who are challenged. We have to revoke that because of this. RAPA saw my point and thought, okay, carry as many women with disability as possible. So many organizations of persons with disability are marked. And I believe that we also should work together to sustain this. Thank you so much.
It is a good thing that we even have the disability act now on ground. Before, we did not have anything to work with. Now we have one to work with. So what are we supposed to do about it? The same way we fought for it to form into existence, the same way we're all going to put our hands together and push that it is implemented. It is not a fight for, oh, it is the persons with disability. If they have been so, they should push it alone. No, because guess what? You don't know when it will affect you. You may be walking out this door and you fall and something happened to your leg or your arm and you become part of us. And I use the example that some of us use glasses, some of us use contacts. What does it make you? So some of us also have emotional trauma, emotional issue. We have psychological problem, what does it make you? So don't think that you are out of this. We all have a part to play here and together we stand the better we can fly. So I want to call on everyone to know that we all have a part here. Be you the media, be you the doctor, be you the nurse. In your own space, in your own space, how much are you advocating for the rights of persons with disability or the rights of a girl child with disability? With from, from what my sister said here, even from the UN women aspect, I want to look for association of women. How much have they carried the women with disability along in the women's forum in Nigeria? Let's start from there. So if the women are not seeing the women with disability as women, who, who is going to do the talking? So we need to see ourselves that we need each other and not seeing that this is a secluded group and work together. So the Human Rights Commission also have, with all the education departments, they go to schools, they say that, they go to schools and subsidize adolescents on sexual reproductive rights. They go to schools every month and they do that. So if you're part of an organization that does that, you can also work with them in that area. Because we both need each other, we are coming from the government area. But we also need NGOs because if you like it, they are it, there are some parts that you can do more that we can't, and there's some parts we can do more, you can't. But if we come together as one, there's every probability that the sky will be our starting point and that's what we want to do and that's what we achieve. Thank you very much.
I remember when we have in women conversations, the major problem I have is, we talk about women in politics, we talk about women in this, women in that, women in this, then we finish all of those ones, then, oh, women living with disability. So it's like, they don't belong anywhere else. It's like, when we have finished living our normal lives, okay, can we now talk about this other group of people? And for me, that is how I'm going to treat the hospital conversation too. That it's not, it's not when we finish with others or when we finish serving everything, what little thing can we put for persons with disability here? For me, it is that if an elevator takes me up to somewhere normally, because as a human being, I'm not expected to be able to magically fly upstairs, that same normal, normal thing in consideration for persons with disabilities should exist. So it's not, and for lack of, I don't want to sound insensitive with this, we need special teams for this, we need all of that, but those special teams should not even be special in the first place, that it should be there even in the initial planning of any hospital. And that by now, Nigeria should, we have a, we probably policies and implementation, but the truth is by now, Nigeria should be operating on that level. Now, one of the things I also liked was that in the disability, um, bill, there is an opportunity to sue. We haven't even gone to implementation yet. But is it possible? Because one year later, let's talk about the fact that one year later, nothing, or is there anybody who can correct me, is there a government person here? One year later, absolutely nothing has been done about this. So did we pass this bill to just keep it in the corner? Okay, at least as a House of Lords member, I signed to, I said yes when time was there to say yes. What more can we do going forward? And then for persons in this hospital spaces is, I don't want a little corner set aside for persons with disability. I don't want us to say, oh, if we're making these beds for, for women, social number of beds, oh, this is how it is. I want it normalised for everyone, because it's possible. It is very possible to make movements easier in these spaces, to make accessing these spaces easier, to make everything much, much easier for everyone. And that is what inclusion is, that we don't have to keep people in that box, but that if we are saying everyone, persons with disability are equally everyone. And it is possible to make these things equally accessible for everyone, it's possible to keep this for everyone and not have to go over it, over and over and over again. My, my, my thing on saying everyone is that this approach matters. I don't think that everyone would like to live their life thinking, okay, they now have to hold a special meeting for me again, or they have to do this for me again. And it's that wrong approach that Nigeria and I think largely the rest of the world exists as if, oh, persons with disability are a discomfort we have to deal with. So how do we deal with this discomfort? And that's not so. For those of us who are older, they've had, you people have had to deal with this for most of your life, but there is a chance that the younger generation coming up to not even have to think about it. And I would really prefer that we do it that way. Normalise persons with disability in every single space, in everything, that, that word normalise is important and I think that all our conversations should be centred on, how do we normalise persons with, in every space, that a place that I can simply go into, a person with disability without second thoughts, should just be simply be able to go in there. Because we all can do the same things. We can do it differently, but we can do the same things, we can think the same way, we can achieve, we can achieve and do things. So I would really appreciate that every single thing comes down to that word. And I think that if we keep, you know, um, insisting on that thing, remember at the gender summit, I said the same thing you were there, if we keep insisting on that normalise, 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 that normalises inclusion, is that we are all going together rather than us keep on separating again, keeping a box. It's like, how do we cope with these people? People who are fully responsible in this society, fully contributing to a society and getting next to nothing for it, normalisation should be the key thing here, thank you.
Please, my contribution will come from where my sister stopped. Um, knowing ourselves is very important. A blind girl and, um, someone is leading you somewhere and begins to touch you in an inappropriate way, like she said, you, you, you mustn't go with that person. You can tell the person, please leave me, go your way, the help will come from somewhere. Let's not do it and I'll just always insist on doing the right thing.
I still remember when I went into labour for my first baby. When I arrived the labour ward at about 1:00 AM, I was asked to enter and lie down in labour bed. When I lied down there in pain, one staff walked in and asked me to walk, to leave, that I was on referral to Gwagwalada from Kujee General Hospital. At 1:00 AM, he asked me to go to Gwagwalada Hospital. I was not happy because it's not easy. And why did they refer me? They said that they've asked me to, um, go for CS before I went into labour. Again, the doctor came in and wrote a referral, a letter, that they were referring me on grounds of, of lack of bed, bed space in the labour ward, but it is not so. Why would the doctor do such a thing? Look at someone with a disability and still, without sympathy, a woman in labour, you're asking me to go to Gwagwalada from Kujee at 1:00 AM in the morning? After much argument and other nurses that knew me came and begged and they allowed me to stay and God help me, I delivered safely without any complication. So there is a need for them to change their attitude towards persons with disability. I don't know why some of them are so heartless. It is not good. We have to sensitise them, that they need to be given some help and even if it's a woman that is without a disability, labour is not time for you to leave a woman without So there needs to be an immediate change in the attitude of social workers or health workers in the hospital.